Welcome to the Litchfield Planning Board Meeting for Tuesday, June sixth, two thousand seventeen. Please stand for Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands on a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tyler, are you still an alternate? Do you want to be a regular member tonight?
Sure.
Alright, roll call. Matt Shoemaker, Vice Chair.
Go, Blunt, Shet, alternate.
Dave Samuel, Member.
Steve Perry, Selectman Rep.
Kimberly Queen, in Member.
Tyler Perrin, Member.
So absence Tom Young. Mike Crum. No one else, right?
Right.
Alright. Give me a public input? No? Alright, so, oh, I gotta get the... Do you have the, uh, application thing that I can read off of my chair?
Do you want me to read it? Better, ready to go?
You have it right there? Yeah, why don't you go ahead?
Um, so, the legal notice is, please take notice that in accordance with the New Hampshire RSA six seventy-five seven, the Litchfield Planning Board will hold a public hearing Tuesday, June sixth, twenty seventeen, at seven PM in the Town Hall Conference Room to Liberty Way, Litchfield, to consider the following. An application by Wayne Caulfield and Michael Ackmando, pardon me if I murdered that, uh, KBT Realty Trust, owners of Mel's Funway Park, for an amended site plan to install three permanent open-sided pavilions at four five four Charles Bancroft Highway Tax Map twenty lot seventeen. The complete set of plans are available for review in the Litchfield Selectmen's viewing room at Two Liberty Way, Monday through Friday, eight AM to four PM. If the aforementioned application is accepted, notice is hereby extended to application approval consideration and/or continuations to a date certain as required.
Thank you. Uh, who do we have present on behalf of the applicant?
Mr. Chairman, Members of the Board, good evening. My name is Andy Pearlman. I'm an attorney with Pearlman in Nashua. Um, I'm here on behalf of the applicant, KBT Realty Trust, um, who owns and operates Mel's Funway Park. Sitting at the table with me is Chris Gagnon of TF Moran and MSC Engineering, uh, who will be doing the bulk of the presentation. If you are ready, Mr. Chairman, I can give you a brief overview, or if you want to check in, make sure all the abutters are notified and fees.
Yeah. John, have all the abutters been notified, all fees paid?
Yes, they are.
Alright, great.
Have been notified.
I'm glad.
Regional impact?
Uh, should we first state the manner of the hearing, conduct, and meeting steps?
You just did that.
Okay. I didn't think I did.
If you read it, it's exactly what you said.
Yeah, you read it.
That was the legal description, right?
Yeah, but it was include...
Okay.
Is there anything else that was missed?
Cool.
I think so.
You're wrong.
Um... The regional impacting is further down, but...
Mr. Chairman, we have a very, uh, simple and straightforward proposal, um, to the board tonight. Um, all of, we all know Mel's Funway Park, um, and it's been there for many, many years. Dave Melhorn started it, Wayne and Mike bought it, took it over, and expanded. And we have the, um, spooky world nightmare in New England, um, that occurs every fall. And over the years, um, Mike and Wayne have been working with the, um, fire departments at both the local and state level. And the fire departments have always wanted to see as much fire protection as possible. Um, and there's been, um, some pushback over the past few years about the tents and the fire suppression system. So the solution to that, and everybody, everybody meaning TF Moran, Wayne and Mike, and the fire departments have said, if we have these permanent pavilions that we can power and sprinkle, all your permitting issues, uh, go away, uh, that they have to run through every year because they have tents and the tents, you know, cause angst among the fire officials. So the solution that, that has been, um, presented to the board tonight is presented to the state and local, uh, fire folks is these permanent pavilions, not unlike the pavilion that we see at Dare Upon, uh, except a little bigger. Um, and the pavilions will be replacing, um, the tents that they have for the haunts. Uh, square footage-wise, they're a little bit smaller, not a lot smaller, but, um, they're, they're about the same size, it's just a, just a fraction smaller. Um, and that's all we're doing. We're installing three pavilions over the course of the next, um, year or two. Um, we have a pavilion in the Shore Wa- Shore Land Protection Act that we're waiting on that permit. That, that one's going to be pushed out till two thousand eighteen at least. But we hope to build the first two pavilions, um, if not this year. We want the, the one closest to the Ts, uh, the one that you see, uh, on the screen, there's the red lines on it, closest to the, uh, uh, the, um...
T-bone.
Miniature golf, uh, facility that gets built this year. Um, and the other two get built, you know, as, as we go forward. Um, but that's all we have for the board tonight. We're, we're replacing tents with pavilions. They get powered, they get sprinkled, um, and, and then the sunshine, so, well, the haunted hayride and the spooky world can make lots more money instead of having, uh, rain events every year. Um, and, and with that, I turn it over to Chris Gagnon, um, to run through the details, but we believe that we, it's a very simple, minor, um, site plan application. We, we provided most everything that we have. We have email comments from, um, Kevin Lynch, the Fire Chief. Um, and we believe we have enough for the board to consider conditional approval with, with a couple of conditions, not many, but we're, we're, we believe we're ready to go.
So I did jump ahead, I apologize. We probably, probably should vote, vote to accept the application as completed or reject because it's incomplete. Does anyone want to make a motion?
All fees been paid?
Yes.
Yeah, we confirmed, I did confirm that.
You did, but a butters, I thought.
No, I asked both.
Oh. I'm not paying attention, though.
It's alright. That makes two of us.
Um, I would move that we consider the application.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Motion carries six zero zero. Um, are there any regional impacts on this? No, I don't...
I have very much doubt.
Yeah.
Should still take a motion.
Yeah.
Okay.
Anyone?
What is the motion?
That there's...
No regional impact?
Mm-hmm.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries six zero zero? Okay, now.
Okay.
I would love for you to continue.
Do we do that again?
Again, we have a very simple, straightforward, uh, proposal for a minor site plan application. We are hoping the board considers conditional approval tonight. With that, Chris Gagnon will kind of walk us through more of the details.
Good evening, Mr. Vice Chair and the Board. I'm Chris Gagnon of MSC Division at TF Moran. Um, so the number of haunted attractions vary yearly to as many as seven in the past. Um, in two thousand sixteen, there were five haunted attractions, which utilized two forty-by-eighty-foot tents and one forty-by-a-hundred-and-twenty-foot tents depicted on the screen there in the red. Those were fitted with a retro, the retro-fitted sprinkler system as was discussed. And those were normally set up in around July and taken down in November. We're proposing to replace those with the three fifty-foot-by-one-hundred-foot pavilions, as we have discussed. Those are timber beam structures, open-sided, with a wood-trussed roof. Um, during the haunting season, those will be used for storage, costume dressing for actors, as well as the haunting exhibits. Um, and in the off-season, they'll be used as storage for the haunting equipment. Uh, the utilities that will be servicing that will be a four-inch water line used for the discussed, um, water sprinkler, or fire sprinkler system, uh, as well as an electric line, um, extended off from the existing electric boxes in the vicinity. For, to, uh, address the drainage concerns, or not concerns, but trick, uh, address the drainage of the proposed, um, pavilions, we provided a infiltration trench along the entire drip edge of the roof line of the pavilions. Those will be three and a half feet wide by a foot and a half deep and provide an inch of, uh, storage and, or, and to store an inch of volume of rain. Um, the overflow of that, um, the overflow, if there be a rain event greater than an inch, will sheet flow across the rear, um, into the catch basin by the, uh, T-boxes, uh, as it does under existing conditions. There's no current drainage issues, uh, no onsite ponding. We don't anticipate that it will flow over there. It will essentially probably infiltrate in the drown, in the ground. Um, the rear of the lot is bermed in such a way that no runoff generated from impervious coverage goes directly into the Merrimack River, um, and that will stay. Uh, there's no proposed structures for, or posts for lighting. There'll be accent lighting on the pavilions. We're providing the following to address the comments from the staff report. We've added the sizes and approximate locations of the temporary tent structures from last year. They, they're depicted on the site layout plan to show it overlaid on the proposed locations of the pavilions. We'll add a note to the site layout plan stating that there'll be no expansion of business operations and such expansion will require further site review. We will add the waivers and dates that were granted, and the dates they were granted to the site layout plan. We'll reach out to the surveying company that provided the signed and stamped survey and ask that they provide the location of the hundred-year floodplain. We submitted the plans to the Lower Merrimack River Local Advisory Committee at the same time that we had submitted to town here. Uh, the meeting was canceled, but we've been in contact with Gene Porter and feel that we have responded satisfactorily to his concerns. Um, as discussed before, the DES shoreland permit is required for the pavilion within the two-hundred-and-fifty-foot buffer, and we've been in contact with DES, and, um, they have no concerns with the proposed design and expect approval with little resistance. We wanted to wait to get feedback from the town about the locations before we finalize that submission to them. Uh, the plan is proposing to replace the seasonal tent structures currently utilized for the haunted attraction. There's no intention to expand business operations. The proposed buildings are for safety compliance with the State Fire Marshal. Intent is to use the tents for storage equipments in the off-season. It's not anticipated to have any impact on the traffic or circul- or circulation. Summary, this is a minor site plan proposal to replace temporary structure with permanent, more safe structures, as well as providing improvements to the stormwater controls. That, that's all the points I wanted to highlight. Do you have some questions?
Mr. Chairman, there are five waiver requests before the board, and when you're ready, uh, we can, we can speak to those. Um, they're, they're pretty straightforward just because we're not doing anything other than replacing tents with permanent structures. Um, I also wanted the board to know that this is a, this will, this will be a huge help to, um, the Mel's Funway Park and the, um, and their fall activities because it's, it's a big cost savings. Because every year, uh, they have to rent and set up the tents and take them down and, and, um, you know, that's out of pocket every year. Once these pavilions go up, it's a one-time cost, um, that they pay for out-of-pocket one year, and then they're, they're good for the years to come, so... It helps out, um, the fire folks, it helps out the applicant, um, so, I hope the board is, uh, willing to work with us.
Does the board have any questions this time?
Um, just about the actual use of the pavilions. It seems like during the, uh, season, I wasn't, I wasn't clear on whether or not during the haunting season, uh, you're actually using them for a component of the haunted house activity. Is the public going to be going through there?
That's exactly what they are. The tents that we put up, we have a little area where we do the makeup for the staff. We put our costuming, and then everybody walks through the haunts that we've set up there. You know, what we're going to do is just simply get rid of the tent system, put up this. We just have always felt it's safer and stronger, and we're at a point that we can do it, and it's going to do the exact same thing. But at the end of the season, we're just going to shut it down. So instead of ripping out all the wires, pulling out the lights, the speakers, the flooring and everything, everything will just stay exactly as it is. And then the following year, we'll go back in, dust it off. We don't want to dust it off, it's Halloween. But we'll go in and just get it up and running and get it ready for the, the next following year.
And, um, it appeared that fire department didn't have any concerns about using it as storage, then changing over to some sort of public use, based on the emails.
No, I think fire, if I, I don't know if I should speak for them. I posted their email, and you, you've all seen, um, comments from the Fire Chief. Um, their main concern was, uh, that by changing it to a permanent structure and having a higher degree of, um, of safety features, life safety, um, to the structures, that there is the ability to potentially increase the occupancy of those structures because the structure type has changed from a tent to a permanent structure. Um, that essentially you could have more people assembled within that structure itself. And so the concern was that by allowing more people into a structure, then you're, uh, creating more traffic, um, and, and parking concerns. I think, um, again, if, what, what I had understood from meeting with the applicant was it's really just intended to be a one-for-one exchange. Uh, so that's where the comments came, that there would be no increase to the actual business operations, uh, that it would maintain the current kind of volume of bodies, uh, going through, uh, that, but any increase to the number of bodies would have an increase to the traffic impacts and would need further consideration, um, of, of those provisions. It was predominantly, um, questioning the waiver request, uh, for the traffic impact study in, in bringing those comments forward.
So I, can I ask a question?
Yeah.
This is to you.
Correct.
How do you do a traffic impact study for a seasonal operation? Now, they are open, spring, summer, as soon as they can, but how do you do it for spooky world?
Yeah.
Because in, in reality, that's the only time traffic's ever a concern.
Right.
And it's also what the chief's pointing out.
Mm-hmm.
How do you do the study for that?
I mean, what, I guess what it would come back to is knowing what the current number of visitors are at the peak. Um, and so you, you know, your traffic study usually looks at your, 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 your peak impacts. Um, so if we're talking about a normal, you know, a more traditional development, we're looking at that morning commute and evening commute. Um, in this particular instance, they'd be looking at what are the traffic volumes coming into and out of the site at their peak business operations, so in the evenings and on the weekends, which is, uh, more of a off, off-peak, traditional. Um, and so the, we'd say, what, what was your volumes last year? And what is your projected increase, um, coming for, as a result of, um, increase? And so it'd be based upon projections and, and guess as to the increased number of bodies. Part of it might be if you, you know that your, you know, your building load occupancy might increase ten percent, then perhaps you say, then, you know, you have the potential to increase, um, by ten percent.
So if we're just going to project and we're going to ask for numbers, we're going to get the numbers of what they've had in the past.
Mm-hmm.
And obviously, they'd like to increase business, but they won't say that now, because that would increase the traffic numbers.
We'll say that. We, we, we hope we have traffic problems.
Well, the problem is, is sometimes we do.
I know. No, I know.
So...
And I think that was the Fire Chief's concern.
That's why I ask how we could actually do a study that would even monitor it, because, I mean, let's face it, if it's a rainy Friday or Saturday night and spooky world's going, it's almost unnoticedable.
Right.
Right.
Even though the parking lots can still be full. But if it's a nice day...
Right.
I mean, you can be backed up...
We've all been caught.
Five or ten minutes, and it's not the end of the world, because I'm happy that the business is doing well.
Right.
But on the same token, you want to make sure that if fire needs to get through, or police needs to get through, that...
Right. So, you know, on, on the flip side, um, the, the alternative is that, um, you could put what's called a condition subsequent on the application, that if there is a noticeable impact, then the applicant needs to work with, um, fire and police to address tho- those impacts. Um, and that would be a way that you could kind of create some form or shape of assurance, um...
How would you attribute that to this particular expansion versus an average increase in business though? I don't, I'm not sure that you could.
Eh, right.
Um, but this is, this actually goes directly to the heart of my con- my concern, and that is the expansion of business operations and the utilization of the air quotes, "facility." You're intending to use it as storage and public access during certain...
Well, the first half of the haunts are going to go in it, and they're just not going to be stripped down. So it's not like we're going to be putting more storage in them. So the tents go up, we put our haunted houses in it, and they look like this room, done and decorated. At the end of the season, we shut the light off, and it stays. We're not going out and getting other product and sticking it in the haun- inside these facilities. They are strictly haunted houses. They will be used for haunted houses with the same exact method we've been using for the, since two thousand eight. That's not changing. The same wardrobe room, the same makeup room. We just want to have something, we all know what happened in two thousand eleven, you know, we lost some tents. You know, we lost hundreds of thousands of dollars that year. We've had hurricanes, which it gets very scary. With these, they're structurally sound, they're going to hold any type of snow load. They're also going to, without a doubt, keep everything there, so we don't have to set up, tear down, break it apart. They're just simply haunted houses.
But you, he was referring to the, uh, snow, the blizzard of two thousand eleven.
So, so that actually clarified something for me, because I was thinking that you were going to use it to store other stuff.
No, no, no. This is just a haunted house that's going in, staying in.
We just shut it down.
Permanent haunted house.
And that's it. At the end, we don't have to rip out wires, speakers. They stay exactly like they are.
So the tents in the front of the facility, that's more like outings, corporate stuff?
That's corporate. Yeah, they're those at corporate, like fun events, birthdays, drinking drinks.
Okay, so they stay there.
Those stay, and then at the very end of our season, we take those down also.
Right, just so that they're not up in the winter, too.
Correct, exactly.
Yeah.
Okay. See, because when we kept saying storing, I kept thinking that...
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I didn't, I didn't mean to just say, but I, I was listening to storage, and I'm like, there is no storage. It's, it's the haunted houses.
We were going to bring everything in storage in there, because...
See, and my, and my concern was actually the flip side of that, that, okay, so you've got an event location, you've got your setup there. You currently have the ability to consolidate that, because you move that off-site and you take it to storage, or you...
Well, and everything stays on-site. We have umpteen trailers that we fill with this.
Okay.
So we're going to be getting the trailers off of our property, which will be great, not to have it...
So my concern was someone later on coming up with the idea, well, why don't we still consolidate the stagecraft involved with the, the setting? Move it all over here and utilize this for events and that sort of thing, because we have the available space if we go through the process of the consolidation. But if what you're saying is, the sets are going to stay up, they're not, we're not going to do that consolidation, we're not going to be moving them around, we're, we're only going to be utilizing them in place, that alleviates that concern.
They're the corporate function tents.
Yes, yes, entirely separate.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's actually more cost-effective for us to leave them in place, improve them, because we, right currently, we pay crews to, uh, erect tents, put in subfloors. Picture this, there's nothing there, and then we have to build the whole haunted houses. And it actually costs a lot of money to distress them and make them look like a haunted house.
Completely understand.
This we can do once, kind of be done at the end of the year, lock the door. Maybe go in and make some improvements throughout the year and tweak a few things from season to season.
Mm-hmm.
But pretty much they stay there. It'll be much more cost-effective for us and safer. And the fire, the, it's really the state that's kind of monitored our venue, because we are a sizable venue. So the s- the state watches over us, like, which they should, you know, and we do, quite frankly, I think we do an excellent job with safety. Um, and this will make them safer and, and hopefully be a win-win for both sides.
So the driving range, does that stay open? Or is that going to close?
I, I hate to say the driving range is going to go away. When we bought Mel's, uh, you know, the joke is about two weeks after we bought it, we heard all this chain-siren up the street. And we thought they were putting in a housing development, and that's when didn't creep putting that mammoth range that we could put our entire park there.
Killed him.
And that was it. The day after that, you know, all of our regulars, the people that come on a daily basis stopped coming. Because obviously, if you can hit in a place where there's no nets and just drive it while, you're more apt to do that. So we've lost business over years, over years, over years with the range. So we're at that point now where, you know, we're just going to pull the plug.
That'd be a good attraction, though.
People have enjoyed hitting at the stuff that's out there, you know, and for us, it doesn't matter. They, they're making it look better when they dent it, so... I think, uh, I think it's time to, to pull the plug on it.
Mr. Chairman, I, I would just comment, um, as to Jen's suggestion. If the board is, would be concerned about traffic issues or whatnot, a condition subsequent is fine with us. And, and, and we say that because Wayne and Mike have been working with, uh, the police department all these years, so it was no surprise.
Does the board have any other questions? Jen, did you have anything else that you wanted to go through?
Um, I think Chris kind of touched upon everything. Um, you know, the main thing was, it's, you know, you touch base with Kevin on the impact fees. It's kind of a non-traditional, um, application, uh, and so just wanted to make sure, um, that I was reading and interpreting, um, the zoning ordinance correctly. There is a provision, um, within the zoning ordinance under impact fees, that if something is an accessory structure and does not have an incre- uh, does not create an increase on, um, the demand for capital facilities, then there are no impact fees associated. Um, and so Kevin's, uh, feeling as zoning administrator was that, you know, so long as they were seasonal, um, they're, they're used to store the, the materials for the haunts, um, a, a large portion of the year, and that there was no increase, um, associated with it, that the, it, the impact fees would not, uh, apply to the application. Um, just looking at my note, oh, yes, okay. Um, and so we already addressed the, it, it, so the question I had, you know, just kind of trying to follow up on the comments from the Fire Chief was, you know, just to confirm that this was essentially a one-to-one replacement, um, for, for those tents, um, that it, it made sense in that regard. Um, let's see, the other things was, again, just, you know, delineating the locations uh, and dimensions of the existing tents on the plans I had mentioned. Again, that was just so that we could verify that it is a, that one-for-one replacement of a, a temporary structure with a permanent structure. Um, that, uh, you know, adding those notes that he mentioned about the, any expansion, uh, would require, um, further site plan review. Um, and, let's see, oh, adding a statement, uh, on to a, a statement or a note, a purpose statement, um, that would just explain the nature of this, that this is for the seasonal use of haunts, um, as has been described here, and that the rain major of the year would be storage. Again, that's just getting it recorded on, on that, um, final version of, of the site plan that gets, you know, recorded here as that official record in town. Um...
The shoreline permit, did you mention that?
They will need the shoreline permit, yes. Um, I was also looking for, um, a hundred, hundred-year floodplain. Um, and should have glanced on GIS, and did not. I'll glance right now. Um, that was it. Yeah, otherwise I thought it was pretty straightforward in terms of, um, you know, the, the safety benefits to be gained from switching from a temporary structure to a permanent structure. Um, in terms of stormwater, um, you know, where you've got, you know, a temporary structure that's already been out there, you've got trailers that are likely going to be removed, you're adding the infiltration. It just, from a stormwater perspective, seemed to be kind of a trade-off of one for the other, possibly improving, uh, with the infiltration, um, that'll be there, so, no other real concerns.
Yes, so my question is this. How many of those temporary tents do you set up now?
Right now, there's three temporary tents that go up.
And what size are they?
Um, one of them is the forty by one forty?
One, one twenty.
Forty by one twenty, and there's a forty by eighty, then there's another forty by eighty.
So, if all three of these structures get built, are you saying that that will be less than what you currently put up today?
No, it'll be the other way. It'll be, these will be a little bit larger than what the tent structures are.
It's approximately thirty, thirty-eight hundred square foot incre- increase.
So, that, that leads me to question, the permanent structure from the tent, okay? And as far as the impact fees go, I get what Kevin's saying, but it doesn't really increase, and it's not, it's only a seasonal use. But we're going from a temporary structure to a permanent structure. If we're going to waive the impact fees at this point, we would have to put something that would label them to come into effect if they became full-time use.
That's fine.
We would have to do something.
Well, with Kevin, because I, I'm, I'm all for trying to help you guys out and make sure that this goes forward, but we've also got to protect the rights of the citizens as a town. And as long as it is going to be seasonal operation, that's fine. But let's just say spooky world went away, and that became, uh, the corporate central...
It better not go away.
The corporate central, you know what I mean? Or something like that. And you're going to start using these things year-round. I mean, we got to protect the rights of the citizens as well. And you were gonna start using these things year-round, I mean, we gotta protect the rights of the citizens as well. That, that's fine, I could just comment on that. Kevin, um, Kevin's analysis was that, that these are accessory and secondary uses to what's already there. There being no additional impact to the town, uh, there, there's no impact fee. If what you're talking about happens, uh, some applicant would be before you with a full change of use. At that point, the, um, you know, all bets are off, impact fees kick in.
The only, the only reason I don't agree with that analogy, though, is the fact that let's just say you build these three, then you go out and put three more tents up. Well. Portable tents.
Yeah.
Then all of a sudden, those three become three more buildings.
But those each have to come back for additional site plan review as an expansion of use.
Understood, but the tents didn't.
In our case, the fire department wouldn't, would not allow it, to be honest with you, just in our case.
Do you see, do you see my point? The tents never did, so now that we're converting the tents into permanent structures, at some point, the increase of business happens.
We had much more speed than before. We actually, we had seven haunted attractions, so the three tents that were there, we used to have five tents on the property.
Mm-hmm.
But as we changed haunts, like now there's carnage, it's a junkyard, so you want that outside, look at the, that type of thing, you know, so you have a colony, that's outside, so we've gone back and forth from years where sometimes it's three, sometimes it's four, sometimes it's two, sometimes it's five, depending upon what haunts are out there on the field, so we've always done that since the day we opened. We started with four our first year, then we had seven, and we ran seven for I think it was five years, then we did the colony, and because the colony was such a hit, we've decided we're gonna keep the colony. You know, that's gonna, one that's going to stay out there, so, you know, I don't see us ever putting up a tent ever again to put a haunt in it, ever, because A, it wouldn't make sense, we'd be back in the exact same, no offense, hole we're in with dealing with running water to a tent from the other side and having to please the local fire department to step. I don't want, it is a nightmare for us to do that.
I was only making that as a point.
Yeah.
Because at some point, when Spooky World came in, those tents went up.
Mm-hmm.
Those tents were never there at one point before that.
Yeah.
Yes.
And they never came before us as an increase of business.
Right.
So now we're considering tents that never came before us as an increase of business, as a non-increase of business to go to a permanent building. See what I'm saying?
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's what I was saying.
So, I'm still okay with it, but we gotta do something to, to protect the citizens of the town, if it's gonna become a permanent use, that, I mean, they should benefit as well.
Can you put something in there that says if we decide to turn that into a, a, you know, year-round structure?
We can probably come up with something, right?
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, might I suggest the following note they added to the plan?
Yeah.
Impact fees are waived for this proposed accessory use. Further site development may require impact fees.
Or expanded use of the structures?
Well, it's not really expanded use of the structures themselves, it's further site development, because the structures are gonna be used. These, these, um, pavilions are gonna be used, you know, fully implemented. So you're not gonna have further expansion of the, um, structures, but you, you may have further expansion of the site. With other stuff.
Other tents, other stuff.
That's, that's too limited.
His concern is, his concern is if you start, so they're being used for storage for two-thirds of the year. So his concern is if you were to expand that use to
Of, of these, of the pavilions.
Of the pavilions.
If a stor- if a standard business popped up a building just to store stuff, they're gonna be hit with impact fees.
Sure.
Hmm?
Okay.
So somehow we have to word that.
You're, you're talking about an expanded use beyond storage for that, for the off-season.
Right.
So you're saying like if we took everything out and then put something else in it to do something, is that what you're saying?
Concert, it's a concert venue, you know?
Right.
So, okay, my second sentence would be revised.
Think of today, doesn't mean it can't be thought of tomorrow.
Right.
All right, how, well.
So, if, want me to give it another try?
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, if I may please? I would propose that a note be added to the plan that says the following. Impact fees are waived for this proposed accessory use. Further use of the pavilions or site development may require impact fees.
Perfect. I'm happy with that.
So you said, uh, further use of the pavilions or?
Site, site development may require impact fees.
Okay. And that would assume that we get the purpose statement that clearly, um,
Yeah.
states what the intent is, um, with the application today.
Yep. Chris said that he's gonna put that in.
Yes. Of course, I only wrote down further use of the pavilions.
Yeah, or site development.
Or site development.
May require impact fees, and then it's a, you know, a case-by-case basis, maybe they do, maybe they don't.
Uh, I would say it may require impact fees, uh, and, uh, subsequent site plan review.
Wow, geez.
It will require, i- an expansion will require site plan review. I mean, that's what you're looking for if there's, you know.
Trust me, I've seen it all happen.
You, you said that elsewhere, but that's fine.
We, we turn open
That's true, I do have it elsewhere.
Yeah.
We've turned open porches into closed porches. Never coming before the board. I mean, anything can happen.
Did we have anything else from the town on this, or are we all set?
Yep, you have five waivers.
No, uh, what's that?
You have five waivers stacked upon.
I know.
Okay.
Yeah.
We didn't have any written testimony, correct, to read it?
No.
Before we act on the waivers, I'm just gonna open the, uh, meeting for public input. There is none. I'm gonna now close the public comment period, and if you wanna, um, if you wanna tell us what you, do you wanna go with the waivers yourself?
Yeah, just very quickly, and I'm, I'm really just, uh, rehashing what, um, Chris had previously submitted in Jen's comments on the, uh, on her report. Um, we, we had the discussion about the traffic impact study, uh, through the fire chief. Um, this really doesn't lend itself to an internal circulation plan, um, because it's, we park in the parking lot and, and the, and the guests walk in the fields. Um, the renderings, uh, you have of what we, we call the renderings at the last sheet of the plan, uh, just the open pavilion. Um, the drainage calculations, uh, you heard Jen's comment earlier, you know, we may, may indeed have an improvement of drainage, um, with the uh, with, with the, what do you call it, the trenches, right? Um, and the, uh, and the gravel and the trenches. Um, and finally, same comment with respect to architectural plans. Um, we do not have a, a fancy building or anything. You have the, what, what we present as architectural plans with the, uh, on the last sheet of the plan, um, as the, just the pavilions themselves. So straightforward waiver, uh, request, uh, Mr. Chairman.
Does the board wanna act on the waivers?
I would move that we accept the waiver request or approve the waiver request, I should say.
Can't, you gotta read them all separate.
Do we have to do all five separately individually? I would move that we, uh, we
You can do one motion and list all five provisions.
Well, you gotta, you gotta list them, though.
Yes.
I would move that we would
Do you have them in front of you?
Yeah. Approve site plan regulation, uh, the waiver for site plan regulation, section one fifty point four. Uh, the waiver request for site plan regulations, section one fifty point five. The waiver request for site plan regulation, section one fifty point six. The waiver request for site plan regulation, section one fifty point seven, Q four. And the waiver request for site plan regulation, section one fifty point seven U.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries six zero zero. So with that, does anyone wanna move to approve the plan? I don't know why I keep looking at you, you just seem to be on a roll.
I'm, I'm the designee, um.
He was prepared to have to chair the meeting.
I, I would move that we accept the plan as provided. There, are there more specifics that we need to?
Conditions?
Conditions.
Oh, the conditions, I did not note what the conditions were. So I would be ill-advised.
Are you withdrawing your
I'm withdrawing my motion. Do we have a list of, uh, of what the conditions are? We had a condition subsequent to
You've got, yeah, you've got what's on the staff report. Um, I'm typing now quickly for you, the one that, um, Andy just proposed, as well as the conditions subsequent. Vamp for a minute. Um, you can start if you want, and I'll have this posted to the Google site.
I have to find it.
Down the bottom of the staff report.
Yeah. I gotta get to it, I've got eight hundred and twelve.
So Spooky World
Wow, yeah, why don't you make a motion?
Spooky World, the max attendance, how big do you get? Ten thousand?
Oh, and a night?
Yeah.
Oh, I would hope to hell that would be awesome. No, not even close.
No?
No, we're nowhere near that. I think our busiest night, maybe five thousand people. I would kill for ten thousand person night. Yeah.
It seems, yeah.
Yeah, it's, you have to think, you're open twenty-four nights, so people spread it out over such a, a long period of time, and there's so many places open now where before, you had maybe five or six in New England.
Yeah.
Now you have five or six within a twenty-minute drive. So you're splitting that, you're sharing that with a lot of people, and unfortunately, I feel like we're in the vortex of lousy weather, you know, since, uh, since we've moved into town, so we apologize to the weather. But, uh, it just seems to happen, but you know, our busiest nights, and that's on probably the Saturday before Halloween. That's like your max night. Everybody thinks it is Halloween. It's never Halloween, 'cause there's family parties, people go out, you know, people stay home. So the Saturday before is always the craziest, and that's always the night everybody complains, why are there so many people here? Why did you come? People love it, so, on that night.
So really, five thousand's like a max night?
Yeah, that's a max night, yeah.
So ten thousand, they need like boat service to get people in?
I guess so. I mean, I've heard, I've heard all kinds of crazy numbers, but
Wayne and I were walking out of the parking lot one day, and, uh, we were just out in the park, and there was a group of kids walking next to us, and the kid says to the other, dude, damn it, a million dollars a night? And I looked at Wayne and I go, where's my money?
What are you doing with it?
It's funny when you hear, you know, some of the people say, you know, David Melholland was in church one day, the original owner, and somebody said to him, I heard they're rich, and then David said, this is what they bought it for, this is what their notice, this is what their this is, and the guy was like, wow, they have a tough goal. Not until you learn, you know, what it is, but, I mean, you know, can we increase, not exponentially, there's no way that we're gonna all of a sudden double our capacity, you can't, you know, we've been open since two thousand eight. You know, we're known, you know, where we are, we work hard to put on a good show, but, you know, maybe on a perfect five hundred, seven hundred and fifty people on a rainy night, you know, you lose four thousand of those people on a night, so. But, okay, question.
Yeah.
Jen, did you, are you ready to go?
No pressure.
I think one of the best things you guys did was when you started advertising in the mall, just for General, Mel's Bar.
Absolutely.
And, I mean, to me, the crowds grew once you started doing that.
We become official in some places.
Just putting the name out there a little bit more, I think helped a lot.
No, I, I would agree, one hundred percent. I remember when we first went into the malls, we asked for certain placement, we're like, oh, can we go here, can we go here, and they're like, no, the mall will never do that. And then we went in a month later and Candy Island Park was in, was the exact same spot.
Oh, the website? Looking in the wrong place.
Just go all around Verizon if you can.
I'm in.
Delete the two things.
What, what, uh, document did you put it to, add it to?
I just added, uh, the Google site. I just typed right on the site page. So you've got the PDF staff report that has the standard conditions, plus the few conditions, um.
Yeah, I've got that ready to go. Where did you add the additional, oh?
Right at the top of the page. Just two additional bullets that would go to your staff report. At the end of your staff report.
Impact fees?
Impact fees.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, Mr. Chairman, if I, if I may make a motion that we accept the application with the following conditions. Uh, that the impact fees are waived for the proposed accessory use. Um, further use of the pavilions or expanded site development may require impact fees, so that would be a note on the, uh, plan. Uh, a condition subsequent be added, any increase in traffic will require coordination with the fire and police departments to mitigate impacts. That the state permit for the shoreline protection, uh, shoreline protection, shoreline, shoreline protection, uh, be provided. And, uh, the waivers are added to the plans, uh, that, on the plans, the locations are delineated for the existing temporary tents on the existing conditions plan. Add a note that there will be no expansion of business operations, and any such expansion will require further site plan review. Add a plan note with a purpose statement that lists the months the pavilions will be used as part of Spooky World, and that the remainder of the year, the structures will be storage. Existing conditions, uh, sheet notes that a portion of the parcel falls within a hundred-year floodplain, and that the, uh, please show the limits of the floodplain and include symbology within the legend as part of that. And add approved waivers and dates granted to the plan notes. I hope I got it all.
Did you get everything of the boxes?
Check boxes.
Oh, okay.
Oh, and that plan copies with professional seals and the signatures are, uh, a condition of approval. Original Mylar with professional seals and signatures are provided. Electronic submission per regulation as built as required. All fees paid and escrows maintained as required.
State permit, shoreline?
Got that early.
Okay, good.
Do I have a second?
Second?
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pro- uh, opposed, abstained? Motion carries six zero zero.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks for working through that.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, really good writing time.
We can get rid of this stuff out here, we'll, you know, we'll get to work this, yeah.
Supposed to get nice tomorrow, I think, so.
You know, so, yeah.
I was gonna say, the weekend, it's supposed to start like Saturday, Sunday, and then it's just gonna start getting hot, right?
Mm-hmm.
Of course, I'm leaving tomorrow, it gets nice tomorrow.
Don't need a Mylar.
You do not need a Mylar.
That's why we say as required.
Okay, you're not, okay. Thank you, again, good luck.
Hey, best of luck.
Thank you, good luck.
Thank you.
Good luck.
I hope I get to the ten thousand, I hope.
That million bucks a night?
Yeah.
Hey, good luck.
I love it, where's my money?
Do you wanna discuss the community design section of the master plan?
Yes. I can, except I, um, trying to log in to Survey Monkey.
Gonna log in and do it again?
Uh, no. But I didn't, um, have an opportunity to, uh
Could I have logged in and done it multiple times?
No, 'cause I asked for your name.
As, as long as you put a different name, you could do it. Actually, you could just skip it.
If I put your name in there under one of the responses.
Is that the H B M I?
Yeah.
It's why I don't like reading through those, it's just so much of a mouthful. Especially when I'm being sick. Did you guys take the survey?
I did this morning.
This morning?
I, I did it like five minutes after she said, this is your last notice.
This is your peer pressure review, yeah, reminder. Oh, that's, hey, we get seven of you, all right. Now, so we, we missed one. You can all see. You know who. All right.
Good to see that young T took the survey.
Is that, is that like his MC name?
He's rapping, he goes, I am T.
All right, so what do you wanna include in your document? This is your, your results? I think we can say, well, they had fifty things, thereabouts, so.
You don't have to worry about the zeros.
We're gonna ignore the zeros, 'cause nobody was really interested in those. Design goals, number one. Is that fuzzy, or is it just me?
It's just you.
Don't you have a duplicator on your screen?
I do, but I'm just making sure you guys can read it. All right, what's that? Zoom a little bit more, in lieu of actually, uh, getting you a PDF here. So, okay, so design goals, downtown walkability and community design vision, top topics. Uh, vision map, uh, existing conditions and trends. Uh, vision map, uh, existing conditions and trends, uh, future challenges and opportunities, past and current planning initiatives, neighborhoods, executive summary, uh, buildings. We got a lot of twos. Um, so, I think that, you know, so the question was, with this kind of in mind, what, what's next? I mean, I guess the next step is kind of start with a rough outline or, or structure, and then go from there to start researching and, and filling in the pieces? This is a brand...
The hard thing is to know like what those mean.
Okay. So maybe that's...
I know what they mean to me, and...
Right.
Right. The question is, is what they mean to everybody else.
Right.
Because like, when I saw downtown, I, I did not vote for downtown, so I'm the only one that didn't, I guess.
I didn't vote for downtown either.
And...
Three of you did not vote for downtown.
And, and the reason why I didn't vote for downtown is because...
Where are we gonna put it?
Where's it gonna go?
Yeah, exactly.
Is it downtown's just gonna come out of nowhere? Are we gonna invest twenty million dollars to make one? How, wh- where does the downtown come from?
I can't remember whether or not I voted for downtown.
I can tell you if you want to know.
But, but all that, all that being said, we're...
I can tell you I'm the only one that voted for tax base.
And you're outraged by that?
No. One of the main things we should be concerned of is the tax base. How do you change it? Everything that's on this list is gonna increase the tax base for the most part.
I think that the, the only reason that I didn't vote for that in the top ten is because until I know the rest of it looks like, it's hard to actually even contemplate what that means.
To me, sitting as a selectman, it's the number one concern. Because anyone that would ever come into the room, if we were gonna try to implement a downtown or a walkability, how do you have walkability without a downtown? Right?
Right.
So, when you start envisioning these things and try to put them into place, everything's gonna come from, where's the money gonna come from?
Well...
It's gonna come from in a town with almost only residential buildings, the tax base.
Well, here's my thought. My thought is, is you're making very valid points. However, w- we as a planning board haven't designed, defined whether or not we all want a downtown. We haven't defined whether or not we all want walkability, because we haven't, and this is going back to the what's next question for Jen, and that is, if we don't share a common vision, then you're gonna have your view, and you're gonna have your view, and we're just going to spin on anything that we try and put together. So, to try and get back to Jen's original question, what's next? I would say that rather than doing a rough sketch or, or trying to put a wireframe around this, having some form of focus on a vision or a vision statement, or a, 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 a guy, a, a series of guiding principles, or something along those lines, so then we can decide what it is that's going to govern the construction of the rest of everything else.
Yeah, I mean, inevitably, we're gonna have to consider what you're talking about, right? Like, there's no way around that. We have to talk about that.
And, I guess, I guess I only look at it because I come from a world of kiss. Keep it simple stupid, okay? Because I'd have to do that in work every day. And what I look at it as is, as much as everybody wants that perfect little downtown, you know, the shops with maybe apartments up above, everybody wants to see that. Everybody loves those little homey towns in Massachusetts, and the problem is, where's it gonna come from? So you might spend a week, an hour, six months trying to develop how you might want it to be, but in reality, it's never gonna happen.
Well, but we have to, but we have to talk about that, because it, it really does come down to what does that really mean in Litchfield? Like, we're given our physical, you know, resources, and given what we can actually support, so we've talked a little bit about trying, wh- what can you really support from a business perspective? Well, you're not gonna put an Applebee's in, in Litchfield, you're not gonna put anything that, that's, because you, we don't have the population here to support change. You, you, we're gonna have to depend, most businesses are gonna have to depend in some regard on bringing business in from outside of Litchfield, right? Spooky World's a good example of that.
Do you think that you need to plan for if this town gets a downtown, or if this town gets an Applebee's?
No, no, but my point, my point in saying that...
Do you see what I'm saying?
Right, but my, my point in saying that is that a downtown, I think that the downtown that you described is not a viable downtown in Litchfield, but there may be a different downtown. Like, if you go, if you go to Hollis, their downtown is not what you're describing, but they do have some type of business there. But just like, uh, you know, when Andy came in last night, he said, "I have people that wanna put more, more uses in, like the, uh, Erickson Construction." Is that what we want to see all of our commercial development to be, is, is, you know, basically private businesses that the, that the public's not accessing? Or do people wanna see, you know, a coffee shop or, or restaurant, or something that, that may draw people from Hudson, so that you can support those businesses? My point is that those businesses, most businesses are gonna have trouble sustaining themselves on just Litchfield residents. It's, it's hard to sustain off of a town of eight thousand for any business of any reasonable size. So, my point in that was that we're not looking to attract Applebee's. We're not looking to attract things that people can go in Manchester, if they live in Manchester, if they live in Hudson, they have that there. They're not gonna come to Litchfield for those things. So, in my, in my opinion, that's gonna dictate what the downtown really is. I don't think we're looking at a downtown like Concord, Massachusetts. You know, that's, that, you're right, that's not viable in Litchfield. But we also will have to figure out the, the tax consequences of that, but again, until we know what we're targeting, we don't know what the tax contribution will be.
Just my point.
It was a great point.
We can't approach this in a sequential manner. These things are gonna happen in parallel.
Right. Right. But, but I, I do think that, uh, what Dave was talking about is, is like the big, we have to understand what the big picture even, what, what we think the big picture even looks like in order to get into the nitty-gritty of some of these other considerations. So, well, you know, let's just talk about downtown for a second here. Well, you're right, we don't have like a centralized space that we're gonna, we're gonna cut down all the trees here, and we can get like one of those little drive-through little like huts that sell coffee out of, but we're, we're not gonna get, we're not gonna get a, a strip mall.
Who voted for downtown?
And what do you mean, what people voted for it?
I, I voted for it, and one, uh, but I, and I voted for it as more of a concept of like, uh, central, like, if, if you are gonna offer some sort of commercial, um, you know, development that's gonna be geared towards retail of, of any sort, whether it's food or whatever, it, it's gonna be centralized, right? So it's, people are gonna wanna see it centralized. They're not gonna see like one store, like, you know, on three A, and then one store like behind the town hall, you know, it's, if, if we are, if that, if that is something, which I believe that in the town survey, there were a fair number of people that had indicated that they loved the city of downtown. Of course, they were probably thinking Concord, Massachusetts, like, I mean, whatever, but...
Of course.
Um, but, you know, I, I, I've, I'm, I'm interested in what does that look like in a Litchfield, you know? What, what's cap- what are we capable of in a Litchfield? Are we able of, of checking off that box with people in a different regard? So that's what it looks like.
Okay.
And downtown, to me, doesn't necessarily mean downtown LA.
Right.
Downtown Concord, downtown anywhere. But downtown has an implication to me of a central place for the town. And be that commercial, be that public, be that something. I, I see Litchfield as having the potential to have a central place. And, again, it could be an open square. It could be a park. It could be something around which, which, which people go to, and it acts as a central hub for just about anything. Again, retail, community events, that, that sort of thing.
Go ahead.
Didn't have anything better to do tonight?
No, I have, I have a problem.
Although...
Do, do we wanna push pause on this, and... Here, turn the phone off.
Open, open the floor to public comment?
Come on down, let us hear your problems.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, good evening. Um, Andy Perlman for the record again, and, um, I, I wanna be respectful of procedure, since you, uh, approved and closed out the, uh, Mel's application that was before you, but, uh, perhaps kind of in, in, if you consider it open discussion or other business of the board, here's the problem I have. These guys, uh, the Mel's guys, um, desperately need to get going with, um, one, if not two, of the pavilions to satisfy the state fire marshal. And the two pavilions that they want to get moving on are the two that are outside of the shoreline protection, uh, land. Um, a condition of approval was that, uh, the, we, uh, produce and deliver the shoreline protection permit before the town signs off on the plans. Um, if we wait for that, before these guys can get the construction going, that, that's gonna kill them this year. Because they can get going on the two, remember we had two pavilions outside?
Yeah, you said the other permit wasn't coming in until eighteen.
It, it, pardon me?
You said something about...
No, no, no. The, the shoreline protection, uh, permit will take, um, some period of time, say another six weeks or so, right?
Um, they didn't plan to build the per- the pavilion that's in the shoreline protection land until next year anyway. So their goal is to build these two outside, um, the shoreline this year, and then when the permit comes in, they'll have it in hand, and then two thousand eighteen, summer two thousand eighteen, they can build the, the last one. The way that approval is structured right now, it could be read that nothing goes forward until the shoreline protection, things which will, um, gum up the works for the Mel's guys. So, again, we're an open session, the application is not before the board, but that's, that's the problem that we were just kicking around outside, just on the timing, and I apologize, we, that was, that was on us to present to you, um, dur- during the, during the hearing.
So Jen, when, I mean, it's normal to phase projects, but is it not normal to do it until all the permits are in place because the plan sets not complete?
Um...
I mean, I suppose if we don't get the shoreline, if we don't get the shoreline permit, we certainly couldn't build that pavilion.
Correct.
But I, I wouldn't want, if we don't get the shoreline permit, to prevent the other two from being built.
Right. So normally, it's more cut and dry. You would need, you know, the state permits before any construction, but where there are th- three distinct structures, um, it, we could have looked at that in a, in a phased perspective, and I'm sho- sorry for not thinking of that myself um, in advance. Um, you could, you could do it, um, so that it's, um, as you can see me typing on my screen, 'cause I forgot I'm connected, um, that you could do it perhaps so that, uh, shoreline permit must be obtained before any construction in the regulated shoreline, um...
Something to that effect, if we find, I'd be happy to put those in writing to the board that we consider something to affect, or maybe a phase one and a phase two, um, for...
Because in, in my honest opinion, we approved that plan.
Right.
So, I don't know if maybe you have to record the plan twice?
Well, we won't be recording, it's a site plan.
All right.
So it's, it...
So it's internal to the town.
Yeah.
I mean, to me, if, i- as long as they're following all the rules, I mean, I don't see, uh, I don't see why we have to have that permit for that third structure, if they're not building the third structure. I don't see why they can't just stop.
You'd need the permit before they build the third structure.
Correct. I don't, but I don't need that permit for them to build the first two structures.
Correct.
But...
The way the...
I need to show a, I need to show a final approved site plan to the fire marshal in order to, uh, and, and, and for building code in order to build these first two. Um, and so, so that's why, um, that's why I'm saying perhaps the board would consider, if I were to, uh, describe this in writing, saying phase one for these two, and phase two when the shoreline protection permit comes in, that, that, that will at, at least get the plan signed, uh, subject to phase two permitting with the shoreline protection permit.
Jen, what are our procedural environments here? Do we have to reopen, re-notify? What, what are our requirements here?
In, in theory, you gotta re-notify. Because it wasn't continued.
It's a matter of ten minutes.
I know, I mean...
Why couldn't you just reopen, in case?
Because in technicality, we already closed it.
We closed it, and in theory, if you had public here, they could have left and not realized it, we came back. That's the, um...
But my argument now on the other side is gonna be, it's already approved. So to me, it's just administrative at this point, as far as which ones are getting built at what times. I mean, perhaps, uh, the board could, uh, administra- administratively approve, you know, Kevin to see this as a phase one, phase two. So, and again, you know, I will put it in writing to the board.
We're not changing the substance of the application.
Oh, absolutely not.
So that's actually a very good point. Um, a change, that's actually a very good point, we might be able to just do this right now. Um, because a minor change doesn't have to be noticed.
That's true.
And a minor change is just something that's in administrative, does not, um, create, uh, an actual change to the substance or the nature of the application. It's a major change, uh, where, where, how that...
Well, in the building.
Um, yeah, right. Um, so a major change would, that would have to be re-noticed. So where this is perhaps an administrative correction of the way, um, that we're allowing the phasing of the permit to, to follow, you know, allowing the two first pavilions to go forward before the shoreline permit. They're not in the regulated shoreline. They don't, those two structures do not require, um, a shoreline permit.
Correct, that's correct.
It's the third structure that does. Um, so if we did an administrative clarification or, or correction to that particular condition that said, you know, that said that the shoreline permit is required, um, maybe it's just that the shoreline permit is required before construction of the third pavilion. So it's a re-phrasing of the same...
The same approval.
Approval and condition, making an administrative correction. Is that...
That would work for us.
Makes sense?
Mm-hmm.
How is it?
That work for you? Kinda said...
I'm, I'm okay with it.
Okay.
It's not changing anything.
It's not changing anything, yeah. So to kind of... Hmm?
How do we go about doing that?
One of you makes a motion to modify the one, um, condition of approval that would simply say that the shoreline permit must be obtained before construction, uh, or before any construction in the regulated shoreline slash the third pavilion.
Jen, I'm just gonna run it back at you, because I'm, I feel a little uncomfortable that the potential exists that it could later be challenged. I don't want it to be challenged later. Um, if I'm playing devil's advocate in this situation, which I don't like doing, but I will for this particular, uh, example, um, shoreline protection is a big deal.
Correct.
And to make an adjustment to, uh, a decision that's already been closed is a big deal, particularly as it comes to protecting shorelines. Um, and, and you're placing this as an administrative change that doesn't really change anything, when in fact the original approval was contingent upon receiving the, uh, the approval.
Right.
Right, but it's not...
But only for that building.
Playing devil's advocate.
You know, that's fine.
Structures, if, if those structures were in the shoreline protection zone, then...
Right.
That would be the case, but it would be, but because they're not, then it doesn't really, it has no impact on that.
Right, so...
That permit wouldn't have any, if approved, that permit has no bearing on those other two structures, because they're not in the permitting zone.
Correct, so those two pavilions that are outside of the two hundred and fifty-foot buffer, they are outside of the regulated, uh, shoreline protection act. They are not part of what, um, DES will be reviewing. They're gonna review what's within the two hundred and fifty feet.
So you're saying that DES would only review the one structure?
Correct.
At all?
Correct.
Okay. Much more comfortable now, thank you.
That's, that's...
Yeah.
So I'll make a motion that we, um, what am I, uh, that we, that we apply in a metic condition on the shoreline permit, that the shoreline permit must be obtained before any construction in the regulated shoreline, uh, shoreline area for the third pavilion only, uh, exempting the other two from the, uh, shoreline permit.
Yeah, because they're out, excluded, outside the...
Because they're excluded from the shoreline protection.
Do you have a second?
I have a second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, so...
Is that gonna work?
Well, the goal is.
We don't have to mention phasing.
Uh, you don't necessarily have to mention, mention phasing, the, the goal is to get the plan signed by the chair, alright, so that we can move forward with the two pavilions. My understanding of what was just proposed is that we can't move forward, even with the plan signed, we can't move forward with the third building until we deliver the shoreline protection permit.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
So that would then be Kevin making sure that that is received before a building permit's issued.
Almost similar to a condition subsequent.
Correct.
Can I just wait till the next meeting in two weeks, or does that impact the timeline too much?
It, 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 it really does, because if you think of, you know, they begin in.
The planning for the build.
Late September. Uh, and I just found out the trusses take six weeks to order and build and deliver, and they need a lot of them. Just the timeline, they, these guys are gonna get going tomorrow regardless of an appeal, because they, because they have to get going. So it, it does.
Yeah, I, I feel comfortable with that, I just questioned if phasing needs to be mentioned.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
No, I, I had nothing further.
There was, there was.
No, I, I had nothing further, I was.
When I said I'd question the phasing, I didn't really know if Andy's expression was, no, like, no, it's okay, or if it was like.
I think it's okay, knowing that we can't do anything, we can have a signed plan once everything falls into place, but we can't do anything until shoreline protection on that third building.
Okay. No further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, abstained, motion carries six zero zero.
Okay. Thank you again, I apologize that we didn't present that, we should have, that was us, on us, so, and thank you.
It's all solved.
Now you can't bad talk us anymore. They're really great people.
Outstanding. Have a good night, guys.
Alright.
See, people can't say we don't work with people.
That's right.
Yeah.
Well, they can say it, it might not be true.
So where were we?
So you were here.
Talking about downtown.
You're talking about downtown. Alright.
So, in looking at these, and in looking at what's in the, call it top ten, top five, whatever, just because, and I'm speaking to your tax concern, Steve, just because something fell outside the top ten doesn't necessarily mean we don't include it.
No, no, I understand. I was just making the point that most of these, these will factor into the tax base.
Yeah, I understand.
That was one of the reasons why I felt the tax base was important.
Yeah, I, I agree.
So I would, based on all this conversation, I would suggest that maybe what we need to do is we need to develop a, a vision statement that, what was, there's a couple of them in the top ten that are vision oriented, that maybe we need to attack one of those first in order to arrive at some form of consensus, that this is what we believe the future looks like, and everything else will flow from that vision.
Right. See, that was the other thing I thought, is like the vision map, I know I voted for that, but one of the things that a vision map to me is, is it can actually incorporate some of these other.
Yeah.
Bullet points that, that were voted on as well, because it can kinda just overview and incorporate altogether.
Right. So you, remember, you've got your land use chapter, that includes that, that future land use vision map, that, that you've already adopted. So that was one of the things I wanted to kinda pull up. So we don't have the new updates up here, but I know I sent, Joan, I sent you, earlier, or end of last week, I sent you, um, one email with all the web updates. So, um, so this doesn't work here, but just keep in, in mind, we don't have to do everything with this one chapter. Okay? So it's, the, the goal here is to kind of try and cover things that aren't addressed in other chapters that you have, and also use it as a, potentially as a way to tie together these different topics and how they fit. So you're seeing community design as a thread that runs through these different topics that, that have come up and been mentioned. So how is community design that unifying piece of the puzzle? So we don't need to forget, you know, into the nitty gritty weeds of economic development as a standalone topic, but how does community design tie into and think about economic development? How does community design tie into and think about a downtown, similar to agricultural or natural resources? So again, I guess you wanna think of community design as a thread that ties all of your existing chapters and content together. As, you know, with seeing that really long list that you had, my, my kinda initial thought was, wow, well, we've already got a lot of this in other chapters. So how do we make it something that goes that next step?
If you, if you look at this town, right, the, one thing that's already, we, we have pretty well defined is the residential component of the town, and what that needs to look like through, you know, minimum lot sizes and all that stuff that we have. So if you look at the bulk of our town, it's already, the design component of it is already dictated, the houses are here, there's not a lot of buildable, you know, residential lots left.
Mm-hmm.
So that, that's all defined. I think when you actually think about this, it really comes down to looking at any of the land, like, we talked about there's the lot next to the Erickson lot that they're asking about, or, or back there, what, what can we do with this, what do you guys wanna see? Um, there's very few spaces like that, but I think it's really coming down to, when we look at those spaces, or when we look at the farms, and if something were to happen to the farms, where they said, we wanna offload this land now, what do we wanna see with those areas? It's pretty, it's a pretty narrow possibility, really, I think.
I don't even wanna think of that.
We don't, but we have to.
We don't wanna.
And I, and, and from my perspective, it really comes down to saying, hey, could we take any, like, could we take, and I haven't looked at it in detail, but could we take that land that Attorney Pearlman was talking about last, or two meetings ago, is that something that could be turned into a mini downtown area? And again, it comes down to what do you bring into a downtown in the town of Litchfield?
Mm-hmm.
So, I, tying it back to other existing examples, Brookline starts their community design chapter with community design vision, and they pulled that really from, from their survey that they, their, their community survey they did, where they asked residents of, of what they thought made Brookline a desirable place to live, and trying to articulate what that character is, that's particular to their community. And, and that's where they started. And, and then from there, they looked at, you know, they pulled in the historical piece, the historical component, and talked about how they came to be the community that they were, what were some of those, you know, defining architectural elements, features within their community, how, how it evolved, what those positive attributes are in their community, those things that they really wanted to stress, and what they already had on the books that helped get them to that future that they wanted. And as part of that, they went through and did, you know, a, a graphic series, not, series. Not all of these are, you know, the most beautiful images, but they started thinking about what are some of those architectural elements that they thought were important.
Mm-hmm.
And so went through this process of identifying things within their community, or within other communities that they think were important for what they'd like to see in their community. And so just went through this different exercise, and trying to kind of give folks a, a roadmap to what they think the community should look like. Community design's one of those chapters that really gets into the tangible piece of it, so that when you get an applicant that ends up here before you, you kind of already have that opportunity to visualize what you think that development should look like, and how it should fit into your community that meets those things that your residents are saying are important. And so then they went through and identified a series of strategies for how to, to get to that end result. And they kept it, you know, they kept it simple, they've got one, two, three, four, four recommendations, that were their key recommendations that they put forward. That was it. Pretty straightforward. That's, that's probably like the skinniest version of a community design chapter. The other, more robust version, definitely a more urban version, Pennacook Village, it's part of Concord, but did this essentially at the neighborhood level, and went through it from, this is very much so focused on, um, structure. But tying that to achieving some larger goals that they had within the community. So that was a, another, another example there. But, the, the, the goal and the challenge is to say, how does community design relate to each of these? So the vision, that's pretty straightforward, you know, you start, you start right up front with identifying what that vision is, and maybe that's the first exercise that we go through, um, with this. And then from the, the vision, we might have some goals that we talk about and identify. I think that doesn't, those two pieces go together, where, where, you know, outlining the chapter and the content. And then, and then from there, from, for the, the perspective of a vision map, you know, we do have, I keep clicking on things and making menus pop up, vision map, so you have your, um, future land use vision map that you did, but then maybe the, perhaps the next step is to think about it as distinct neighborhoods or, or communities within the town, and are there variations in what you're looking for within those different areas or neighborhoods? So taking that vision map, that next step.
I think, I'm really just, like, my biggest interests are preserve, like, where do we, where are we, where and how are we gonna preserve open spaces? Because I think when it comes down to what the agricultural feel is to people, we can't, unless we, unless we buy a tractor and put it in like a park somewhere just to like memorialize the fact that this is a farming community, if the farms go away, there's, there's not gonna be tractors driving up and down it, but I think people are valuing that open space.
Right.
So I, I, I think one part of it, one of my interests is open space, the other interest is, if we even can support any sort of commercial development, where and how is that gonna look? Like, is it, is it gonna be that we get, you know, we're able to get a restaurant, we're able to get a coffee shop, we're able to get a, you know, country store, or whatever it is? And, and where are those gonna be? Like, are those gonna be just like one-off things, or is there gonna be like a, like a little centralized area where we're able to, to tuck some of that stuff? And I, I really think that from the layout of this town and what, what our potential is, I don't know that it goes much beyond that, really. Anyone else?
Too close to, you know, London Dairy and all the other little towns that have that, so. Why, I mean, I don't think that, I don't think you should look at it like, you know, how can Litchfield sort of, uh, you know, how are they gonna be able to support that? Because you go, if you're gonna go like right over to London Dairy or Hudson or somewhere else, it's so close that.
You're gonna go there, you're gonna go there for Starbucks.
Yeah.
You're gonna go there and grocery shop, but, but, for example, you know, like, I drive to Bedford all the time to go to Copper Door.
Yeah.
It's a great restaurant, like, I can't go to London Dairy for Copper Door, 'cause it's not there. I can't go to Hudson for that. But it's, it's something that's unique, and so that's the only, that, that is my sort of example of how, if, if there were going to be something in, in Litchfield that was gonna be viable, it would have to be something that people are willing to come in for. Like, Spooky World is something that people are willing to come in for, people come from Massachusetts to go to that.
From, yeah, from outside.
You know what I mean, because it's, it's something that's different that they can't get where they are. That's the only thing that's gonna work here, because with eight thousand people, you can't support Home Depot.
Right, yeah.
Right, and there's one in London there.
Yeah.
A bank would be nice. Some professional buildings would be nice, right?
Yeah, but again, you have to.
Yeah, we have the two sections that are business owned, right?
Right.
But like, what do the people in the town want that don't want to travel twenty minutes, forty minutes back and forth?
Right, but you have to remember, but you have to remember, can eight thousand people support those things, so.
Well, we don't need them to be, oh, you're just your customer base either.
Right, but let's take a bank, a bank for example. If you bank with Bank of America, you're not gonna come from Hudson to go to Bank of America in Litchfield, generally.
I usually think bank of where it comes into the downtown, right? Why do you go there to do three or four errands on your list?
Yeah, yeah.
Small errands, by errands.
Right. Right. But the cost, for, for any of these types of businesses, the cost of, of, you know, putting up a structure, staffing a structure, they have to be sure that they're gonna get.
Yeah, but they might on one oh two, you know, certain areas, but yeah.
Right. So, so will people, 'cause ultimately, I don't know that eight thousand people can support many types of businesses. I mean, we have a couple pizza places, so obviously, eight thousand people's enough to support that roughly, eight thousand people, but.
Didn't somebody bring that up, though? If we're gonna, might have been at the commissioner meeting, if you're gonna travel twenty minutes out of town and twenty minutes back, you might as well do three or four errands, right? Can you do that locally, so? And get a coffee on the way.
Right. Like, coffee.
Hey, we could've had a gas station, convenience store, and a coffee shop. Could've had it all.
Oh, great.
It got shot down.
Alright.
Zoning Board didn't think it was something that the community needed.
Let's see, with a, with a good.
Because they were worried about the aquifer that's contaminated.
Gee. Gee.
PFO is much better, I guess.
Is it?
But again, we can't control the agenda of the people with the money that are gonna snap up the land.
Well, no, no, but, but you, but you can target them, though, and that's my point, is, like, I feel very strongly that, like, and I use this example all the time, and I think Rick owns the land, and who knows what he wants to do with it, but across from Hidden Creek, that's a huge lot. You put in a, if you put in a decent farm-to-table restaurant there, it's relatively easily accessible from the new bridge. So people that wanna travel, like, you know, there's times I go to National for dinner, and I'm like, I'm sick of all these restaurants. You know, people, generally speaking, people will travel from good restaurants. So that's something where the people that are gonna invest in that will, they would have to justify and say, okay, this is accessible from these communities, we believe that we have the customer base for that.
So we're running into the problem, we're talking about the town aging and not being able to travel as well, right? So we have a lot to discuss here.
That's where, that's where you need to strike the balance with the right vision for the town.
Right.
And I think it has to incorporate all the things that we've all just mentioned here, and we've all just, we've all mentioned previously as well. But the question is, is, the question I think that we need to put to ourselves is, where do we start? And even in the, even in the items that Jen was reading from the other cities, and certainly in research that we all have done at varying levels, I feel, I just feel like it starts with having a vision statement, having something that says, this is what we're about for, you know, the ten, twenty, thirty-year timeline. But everything else flows from that.
That's gonna be our vision, doesn't mean it's Litchfield's vision. I like bringing in the survey, that's real data metric, but it's only one.
Hopefully, hopefully as representatives of, of Litchfield, we're, we're getting them to weigh in appropriately.
So if you look at the survey that we had done, the survey wanted to preserve farmland, preserve open space, preserve the walking trails, they wanted to increase taxes?
Like the river, the river.
I don't know.
Increase.
All they wanted to do was, everybody.
Someone wanted a Walmart here.
Everybody wanted to preserve everything that everybody loves, while you don't allow business, you don't change it from a bedroom community, but they also wanted to decrease tax base.
Yeah, that's, that's where the two ends of the town are gonna.
Those were like the high, the, the, the top bullet points of that survey.
But see, and, and that is really important, that's, and that's something that I've been trying to, that's been my major point, is, I think that the problem is that people can't fathom, you, you have to increase business, the, the business tax base if you wanna pay for any of that stuff, otherwise people are gonna be extremely unhappy. And my point is saying to them, let's just use that lot next to the Erickson lot, that, as an example. Ninety percent of people in town probably have no idea that that's back there, they're probably not familiar with it, so they, they can't imagine, like, that that could be the place where the business is coming in. They don't know that Erickson's building this thing back here, and that's gonna be a place where that's a source of.
Put on the same token, that wouldn't work, because it would be off the beaten path.
It could work for.
Is there, is, yeah, but they have.
Different kind of business, like, an online business doesn't need, can be as off the beaten path as you want.
Well, but even, but even not online business, though, there's, if people, if people know it's there, if you create the space and people know it's there, then.
Alright, so I guess the way I look at it is, if you made that space back there as like your town center, your town downtown, with little village shops and everything, then you're back to. then you're back to this town having to support it because nobody else is gonna know it's there.
Well.
Whereas if it was on three A or if it was on one oh two, then other people could happen upon it.
Right, right. Well, they have, they have some level of frontage though, don't they?
No.
They don't have any?
None. It's all in the back.
Okay. Well, that's, so that's, you know, but it's one example of maybe it's another Erickson type business.
And then we don't allow off-premises signs, so we can't direct them over there.
That's something we have to discuss. But my point is just that if we don't create a vision for people of what that looks like here, they're, they're resistant because they, I think, my perception is that they are perceiving, you know, strip malls like, like one or two in Hudson. Like they're, that's what they see coming in up and down three A. So they're like, no, 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 I don't want that. I want the walking trails, I want this stuff. If we create a better vision, like that little, I'm just thinking of in Hollis, that little like, I don't know, it's like a grocery store and stuff like that. It's, it's little, it's not intrusive on the town, but you know, if we create the idea of like, this is all you're looking at, you're not looking at something, you know, strip malls up and down three A, then people's opinions might change of having some of that stuff to support the trails. Because I grew up in a town where the, there was like well-supported trails and it was awesome. People walked them all the time and they're really nice. You walk the trails here, it's not quite the same, but people value that.
No?
No.
I stopped walking.
So what are our next steps?
I think, I, I don't think you're off-base with a, with a vision statement.
So is that something that we wanna operate, kinda, I'm not gonna call it a subcommittee, cause that is a formal tone to it? Create some kind of subgroup of this group to develop?
Uh, from my perspective, the only, like, I think my vision statement is, well, it's, it's not even a vision statement, it's really just a goal, which is, let's, let's start diving into open space and commercial opportunities here. So where, where are the spaces that could be used for them? What could it look like if we were to develop those things? And from that perspective, I think then we have like a decent idea of what we're working with. Cause like I said, it's, it's very minimal what our opportunity is here. Most of this town is residentially developed already.
Well, I think you still need some kind of, need to aggregate all this into a document. Who's gonna make the document?
Well, you have to, I mean, that document is our master plan, right?
Oh yeah, but for the, for the vision specifically, right, we wanna give, like, um, Jen was saying, with the, the other examples, they have these pictures of what business can look like. Why don't we write something up like that?
But, if we, but, but let's say, let's say we have just that lot next to the Erickson lot, right? That, let's say that's our only option for commercial development. Then those beautiful archways, we don't really care about those because who cares what the beautiful archways look like on a back lot that no one's gonna ever see? Like, i- it's, if we don't first identify what the opportunity is, then we don't really, like, that's just spinning our wheels.
Okay, I really can't.
You could see.
Put a J-Care in there, some doctor's offices.
You need to always think of it from the perspective of it could be seen in the future, just cause something's hidden behind, you know, in a back lot or in behind the.
Sure. I guess my, my point is if, if the, if the pers- if, if our plan right now is, hey, listen, there's nowhere, like, we're not gonna look for coffee shops. We're not gonna look for a gas station. We're not gonna look for a restaurant because we don't have the, the resources for that. We can't support it. Then the design of what a restaurant might look like really doesn't matter right now.
Right, but I don't think anyone is saying, let's design what the restaurants need to look like. I think what we're saying is.
Right. Right. No, but.
Let's, let's, let's agree amongst ourselves what, what the picture, big picture can look like, and then we start breaking it down from there.
Big picture. Vision statement.
I guess my point is I just don't, until you know what the components of, that are gonna, like, those are what limit the big picture, right? Like, if, if our only, for example, the commercial aspect, if our only opportunities are.
I like that, Jen. Where'd you get that?
If our only opportunities.
Amherst? Is that Amherst?
This is, um, work we did on a survey for Amherst Village.
Yeah, you showed this once before.
Yes, so this is what's called a visual preference survey. Um, so when you're talking design, you're really talking about what things look like, right? So words not necessarily helpful, except with the, you know, needing to have a, a, a bullet that you can associate with the image of what you're trying to convey. Um, so what this, is Amherst divi- def- defined a series of different issues and concerns that they had uh, within the village. Uh, they were focused on, um, a strategic plan for the village, but they wanted to think from a more visual perspective and work, operate from a more visual perspective.
So maybe what we need to do in order to help, help out this conversation is, do we need to define what we mean by community design? Because in my mind, community design is not, your building has to look this way.
Right.
That is not what I'm talking about. I don't know if that's what you guys are talking about or not, but it's about what we want to be as.
We already have regulations on buildings.
Right, right. It's, it's, no, but it's about what is, but what is the community, it, right now, we have a community with like no, very few co- commercial amenities, right? Like, we talked about, oh, we could have had a gas station, but we don't. Well, we could have, could we have a coffee shop, but we don't. Like, we don't, we don't know about any of those things because like, to me, it's like, okay, is that the direction we go? Or we have a few of these amenities? We're never gonna have every amenity you can think of. Are we gonna have a few of these amenities? Or is it that we're not gonna really ever have any of those amenities? And that commercial development is only gonna be geared towards companies like Erickson that are gonna come in and they're gonna be using stuff that the, the general public.
Right, but unless you, you have a vision statement about, okay, we want to be, um, a, a, a town that invites uh, and is open to business like Erickson and not like Starbucks. If, unless you have a, a visionary picture of that, you can't define your community design sub-chapters or your chapters.
You're constrained by what the actual resources are to you, right? So like, i- if you don't have a place to put Starbucks.
Right, but you, you're, you're, your underlying assumption there is that people aren't willing to knock down houses in order to build Starbucks. And the truth is, is people are willing to knock down houses in order to build Starbucks. Um, I've got, I've got a friend who lives regionally and they're knocking down their houses to build Starbucks. No joke. So that being sa- that being said, just to Steve's point earlier, just because it doesn't exist today, it doesn't mean it's not gonna happen tomorrow. So if we don't start with a blank slate and say, what is it we wanna be from a blank slate perspective, then we're automatically de facto restricting ourselves to what it is the future can be. I would rather take a big picture and, and invite as much input as we possibly can and then filter as opposed to go into a vision statement with filters are, and already applied. Does that make sense?
That's a great point, yeah. That's a great point.
Okay.
This was a much bigger discussion than you thought we were gonna have.
Oh, no. I knew it was gonna be a good discussion and I knew we didn't wanna deal with sifting through fifty topics at the beginning of the meeting, um, cause that's not fun. Uh, I wanted to sift before you got here so you could get to this. Um, so, alright, here's what I'm hearing, is not everybody has the same definition of what community design is. We've kind of identified a handful of common threads, but I would say other than maybe these top four that got at least three votes, we don't necessarily have consensus around the table um, as to what a community design chapter does or should achieve. Because when you've got this many things that all have two people or one people, we're not all on the same page.
Who voted for other? I think that was me.
So, um.
You picked the options and you voted for other.
Alright, if, if someone wrote other, they had to write what it was.
There, there is a, there is one called other. They gotta vote.
The other, River Access in town.
Yeah, it's a good.
Whoever came up with that, very good. It was none of you apparently, no one's owning up.
It would be whoever replied and factored on it.
That mu- that might have been Tom, right?
It was, I bet there was Tom, nope. It was Tom. Or Kim.
I did not do that one.
So it was Tom.
I can figure out who ran third what.
It was Young T.
Young T, Young T wants to go swimming.
Thank you, Tom.
We have a.
Yeah, that's a really good thing.
I have a, a fun little button that I can push and I can see each of your individual answers too.
Didn't it just get complete?
There you go.
Uh, okay, so we don't necessarily have consensus as to what a community design chapter is. So can I, can I propose another homework assignment? One sentence. Everyone writes one sentence over what community design is.
How many semitimes can they have?
I'm not gonna, I, I don't have a workbook. I'm just trying to be nice and say one sentence. You can write a whole paragraph or a whole page if you want. Um.
Give her a book.
Um, if everyone could write what community design needs to them and then identify a handful of questions that you would want more information on to be able to further articulate what that is. Because I think it's fair to say that we should go into this with a vision um, and an understanding of what we're trying to achieve, but with the understanding that we don't necessarily have all the answers going into it. So there are, there are things where we're gonna want more information. Does that, does that sound like a good next step? I think the first thing we need to do is, is come to some form or shape of consensus as to what community design is. No?
I think so. I agree.
Okay.
The tape's already done.
No, I was just typing it up as a homework assignment because I can wrap my head around it better when I actually see it. How, how would you propose collecting the information and disseminating the information?
I can put it into Survey Monkey again if that's easier, or you can email it to me.
Might as well just email it to you. It's not a survey question.
That's kinda what I thought, but that's, you know, if you like things that are having forms.
If you give me a survey, I'm gonna wait to do it till the day of, so.
I'll keep sending you reminders.
Perfect. Alright. That sounds good. Everyone's, everyone's good with that?
And when, when do we intend to have this done by?
Next meeting?
When is our next meeting?
The.
I keep sharing my, I'm not sharing my scary calendar.
Didn't Tom, didn't Tom tell you he's gonna start doing ones a month for the summer?
Yeah, but the, the, the month would be the third, the twentieth.
So the twentieth is the next year?
Somebody's supposed to visit. Aren't we supposed to have a visitor coming up in the summer?
We were supposed to have Andy come in, but he hasn't.
I have some news on that. I don't have to work an hour after the meeting.
Yeah, I got kind of all the news in this field. I'm part of the, uh.
Okay. Um, alright, so moving on to the Kevin escrow.
Before, before we go to the escrow release, can I just make a suggestion because we're moving slowly on this? Can I make the suggestion that we establish as a goal for our next discussion around this, whenever that is? That we, we come out of it with some form of concrete next steps to-dos, which are a little bit larger than send Jenna Sutton's. Because I feel like we're, we're slowing down rather than speeding up. And I was just hopeful that we could move it.
I'm fine with that.
Thanks.
Depends on the responses, man.
Alright, so escrow release.
I'm out of school.
I sent you the spreadsheet.
Did you open the spreadsheet?
Very good at getting assignments done in four hours.
My, my schedule is awful.
My hand, I stay up.
Four AM.
Did you open the spreadsheet for the escrow release? Cause we know that you have strong feelings when you don't see it.
No, it didn't work out.
So the current balance on the escrow is thirty-eight hundred and fifty-four dollars and eighty-five cents?
Yeah, but if you're gonna make a motion, don't give the amount.
Don't give the amount, yes.
Yeah.
Which subdivision is this?
Uh, um, on the town line down behind Eddie's garage. The road is, there's no part of the road in Litchfield.
What was that?
There's no part of the road in Litchfield. So there would be no inspections on Litchfield side.
Does anyone wanna make a motion on that?
So there's, are they not building in Litchfield now on, down there?
Part of the lots are in Litchfield. Hudson won't record the plan until they either build the road or put a bond up, which they haven't done anything. So Hudson won't record the plan. But we would have, we would only have building permits. We would have no inspections.
So have they requested the release?
Hmm?
Has the release been requested by them? The escrow release?
No, but I've just, you can see how long we've been holding it where the, it's just been collecting interest since two thousand, what was it, fourteen?
Yeah, fifteen.
Fifteen.
Two thousand fourteen. Does anyone want to make a motion on that?
Depends. Do you wanna give him his money back?
I, I always check with Kevin on these too, whether, you know, he thinks they should be used.
Tom Young says no meeting first week of July.
Yes, July fourth.
Tom is watching.
Yeah. Hi, Tom.
Hi, Tom. Um, okay, so is anyone gonna make a motion on this or you're just gonna?
So what was the, what was the initial escrow account created for?
The subdivision, when the subdivision went in, I think there's five or six lots in Litchfield and some of them are only the back of the lots in Litchfield.
Can all the work's been completed and signed off and?
No, they haven't done anything.
No, they haven't. They've moved dirt around, but the road, the road, um, structure is all in Hudson. It's right on the town line.
So it's all, the whole road structure is there?
No, they're kind of stalled, it seems. It's not paving.
So why are we?
Because there would be no more inspections on our, on our end. Lou wouldn't be inspecting anything because the road's not in Litchfield.
But the plan's not complete, right?
Plan's not even recorded.
So if it's not recorded and it's not complete, what's preventing them from changing anything?
Could they reconfigure and end up with anything that would require inspection?
Could they reconfigure? Uh.
If the plan hasn't been reported in Hudson.
I don't see any reason to give it back if they're not requesting it.
Okay.
Unless you wanna give it back to them because.
No, I think you make a good point. It, like, if there's a chance that they could potentially reconfigure because it's not an approved plan.
Right.
Yeah, it's a good point. Okay.
Alright, so strike that from the agenda here. Any committee reports? Minutes from May sixteen. Anyone review them?
It's wordy. Look good.
Wanna make a motion?
I wasn't here, so.
I'll make a motion.
Motion.
To approve, yeah.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Posed, abstained? Motion carries five zero one. Any other business? No. Alright.
Get well soon, Tom.
What?
Get well soon, Tom.
I'll get well soon, Tom, yes.
Next meeting is June twenty?
Next meeting is June twentieth at seven PM. And does anyone care to return?
Okay, Mr. Chairman, any motions to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed, abstained? Motion carries sixty.